Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Minneapolis Planning Commission for August 4th, 2025. My name is Chris Meyer and I'm Chair of the Commission. At this time, I'll ask the Clerk to call the roll.
Apologies, I'm not quite ready yet. Okay. Commissioner Baxley?
Here.
Chowdhury?
Present.
Conley?
Present.
Gordon?
Is absent.
Jones?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Shefty?
Is absent.
Thompson?
Is absent.
Wagner?
Here.
We have six members present.
That is a quorum. All right, first, we'll move to the minutes of July 21st, 2025. Is there a motion to adopt those minutes?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Right. Any discussion about the minutes? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? The minutes are adopted. Next, we will organize our agenda. The staff recommend that items four and five, let's see, which one was the continued? Oh, yeah, four and five be on the consent agenda, that six be continued. We will discuss item seven, and then I am also going to discuss item eight. So, was anyone here to speak against staff recommendation for item number four, 734 and 800 Tyler Street Northeast? You are. Okay. So, we will discuss item four as well. Was anyone here to speak against the staff recommendation for 1544th Avenue North? Anyone? All right, so we'll keep that on consent. Item six will be continued to the August 18th meeting, and seven and eight will be discussed. Is there a motion to adopt that agenda?
No.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? That is adopted. All right, so we'll all first open the hearing for our consent agenda item, 1544th Avenue. Would anyone like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on item five. Commissioners, is there any discussion on item five? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt that item?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Item five is adopted. And then we need to have a separate hearing for our continuance. So, I will open the public hearing for item six. This is the public right-of-way to the east and north of 5117 Harriet Avenue. So, if you came here to speak to that item, you can do so tonight, or you can do it when it comes back on the agenda on August 18th. Did anyone want to speak to item six for the continuance? All right, not seeing any, so I will close the public hearing on our continuance item. Is there a motion to continue item six to August 18th, 2025?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Item six is continued. All right, so we'll go to our first discussion item, 734 and 800 Tyler Street Northeast. Staff is Lindsay Silas.
Good afternoon, Chair Meyer and members of the Commission. The project before you right now is 734 and 800 Tyler Street Northeast. This subject site contains two parcels. One of them, 734, has a single-family home and a detached garage. 800 Tyler Street Northeast is vacant. This project or address may sound familiar, as it was subject of a right-of-way vacation in October 2024 to vacate Cemetery Avenue in this location. And so, the that land that was returned to 800 Tyler Street Northeast as part of that vacation is also part of the development parcel. The site is near at the intersection of Two Goods and Services Corridors, Broadway Street Northeast and Central Avenue Northeast. There's no alley at the site. The zoning is UN 3 and Corridor 6, built for a mobile district. The applicant has proposed to demolish the single-family home and garage at the site and construct a new four-story residential building with 34 dwelling units. There's no vehicle parking proposed for the project. There are only two applications that are required site plan review for the new four-story building and a variance to reduce the minimum front yard setback for an electrical transformer. Here's an aerial view of the site showing that existing single-family home. As I mentioned, there's no alley on the site. There's a railway spur right to the rear of the site, between the site and elevated Central Avenue. This is the proposed footprint of the building, and you can see in the front yard here is the location of the electrical transformer. And then there's a small patio at the rear. So, the applicant is proposing 34 dwelling units, a mix of studio one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. And here's some floor plans that are this is the first floor, which includes a large bike room. The applicant succeeding the required amount of long-term bicycle parking, and also has some short-term bicycle parking proposed. And then the upper units, or the upper floors. The applicant has proposed that the project would be passive house certified, and there are solar panels proposed on the roof that you can see here. And the building elevations, some photos of the existing, and here is a rendering of the proposed building from a couple of angles, including this rear view. You can see the decks and the patios. So, there are, like I mentioned, only two land use applications, a variance to the electrical transformer. The applicant and I and Representative from Excel went back and forth on the requirements for electrical transformers. Electrical transformers are permitted. Obstructions in rear yards where the property is served by a public alley. There's no public alley adjacent to the site. Excel has a variety of requirements for electrical transformer servicing, and the applicant went back and forth with Excel. And really, the only location on the site that was identified as being appropriate was that corner, that front northeast corner of the yard. There's no vehicular access to the site, so there's no other way for trucks to get into the site to service the transformer. And so, staff concluded that the findings are met for the variance due to the site constraints and the requirements from Excel. For site plan review for the new building, the project required only had only three requests for alternative compliance. One for window area on the ground floor, which was not meeting the 20% requirement. Staff has recommended a condition of approval that the applicant comply with the standard. The first floor of the building is not meeting the ground floor active functions requirement. 40% of that that linear frontage is inactive compared to the maximum of 30%. Staff is recommending granting alternative compliance due to the irregular shape of the site and not having access to an alley, so needing to locate some of those utility and bike rooms uses on the ground floor. And then, the standard for requiring a residential drop-off and pickup space, staff is recommending granting alternative compliance, because that standard says that it will not mandate mandate a vehicle curb cut where one does not already exist, which is what would be required in order to comply with that standard. So, staff is recommending approval of both applications. There's one condition related to transformer screening for the variance, and eight conditions for a site plan review, which are stated in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Lindsay. Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? All right. Thank you, Lindsay. So, I will open the public hearing. A few notes about it. First, we have captioning for our meetings, so we ask everyone to speak clearly and at a modest tempo, so that they can accurately transcribe everything. And we have a lot of people who are interested in testifying on an item later tonight, so we're going to be limiting people to two minutes per speaker. So, with that, do we have the applicant here? Go ahead, and tell us a little bit about your project.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cody Fisher. I'm president of Footprint I'm sorry, is that better? I'm president of Footprint Development. Chair Meyer, members of the Planning Commission, thanks for taking time to consider this application tonight and for the public hearing. I won't I won't go into any great detail about the variance requests, the variance request, other than that it is very much required, if anything, is to go in and be developed on this parcel, just to accommodate Excel's needs for for access, for maintenance of a transformer. I wanted to touch on environmental benefits of the project specifically, and then also kind of the community engagement process up until this point. In terms of environmental benefits, the project will be at being fee certified, means that it's going to be third-party tested and verified for its energy efficiency performance. It will be about 70% more energy efficient than typical code minimum new construction. It's going to be all-electric. There will be no fossil gas infrastructure put into this building at all. That's good for indoor air quality, but for also emissions reductions. 40% of the building's energy consumption will come from rooftop solar. All of these things, this type of very energy-efficient, healthy housing, is totally in line with a number of policy goals in the city's comprehensive plan. And and I'm proud to be putting this kind of project forward in this location. And location is really critical. This is a highly walkable, transit-oriented, and bikable location within stone's throw of a variety of daily needs for the future residents of this building, and will make significant progress in reducing vehicle miles traveled for folks who choose to live in a building like this, which is very much bike-oriented, like another project I have about two blocks away on Van Buren Street. And what I'm most excited about this location is the release of kind of the the MINDOTS plans for redesigning Central Avenue, which include grade-separated bike lanes, dedicated bus lane for the future FBRT line, which is going to have a stop extremely close to this, some of the highest-quality transit service in the city. So, with that, shifting a little bit to public neighborhood engagement, before preparing and submitting our land use application, we met with the in May with the Lower Northeast Neighborhood Association's Housing Committee and gave an initial concept. They gave a bunch of really high-quality and thoughtful constructive feedback. We made a number of changes around proposed units, height, and density to the project before submitting the the application based on that neighborhood feedback. And then, we had a follow-up meeting subsequent to that in July, where we had another round of really thoughtful input related specifically to the the trash roll-off location on the north side a lot by the transformer, and the concern that that might be used for temporary parking by residents. And so, we're going to do some signage enhancements and paint and other landscaping enhancements there as well, to make sure that it's it's not used in that way, because it's only intended for Excel access and for rolling off dumpsters. So, with that, I just want to I'll close, and and thanks for consideration of this agenda item.
Thank you. And to clarify what I said before, we give 10 minutes for the applicant, and then two minutes for each subsequent testifier. Before you go, Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant before we proceed with the rest of the hearing? All right, thank you. All right, next testifier. Who is who is your end? Go ahead and come up and introduce yourself, and tell us your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name's Andrew Simeoni. I'm the property owner directly south of the proposed development area. I have lived at this house for 22 years, raised a family of three kids there. It was a beautiful, lovely neighborhood. We bought the house because the other house was at the other side of the lot, and there was an empty lot between us. Didn't feel like a city, felt like more like a small town. Love it. Don't absolutely don't want a four-story monstrosity next to me. I've been investing in this neighborhood for 20-plus years. I feel like this is going to ruin everything I love about my house and my investment. My 88-year-old mother now lives with me. I worry about her and how the noise of construction and the chaos of construction is going to affect her. I worry about how it's going to affect my life. My power pole is next to the garage proposed to be tore down. My power comes from that pole to the back of my house when I look at the plans fairly close to the building that's proposed to being built. Has anyone talked to Excel about the access to my power pole and my connection that's on that that lot? I'm worried about that. What's going to happen during construction? Are you going to take out my power? Are you going to have people parked up and down the street? There's currently no parking right now. I'm worried about the parking. I'm worried about city access. I'm worried about garbage access. I'm worried about plows. Four-story building, that means if there's a fire, you got to call the ladder truck. Is a ladder truck going to get back there? I have the only, the only fire hydrant on the street at the end of my 190 feet of sidewalk, you know? I just I understand that development needs to happen. These are not apartments that are going to help people who need housing. These are not low-income. They're not Section 8. They're not subsidized. These are market-rate apartments. There are literally thousands of market-rate apartments within half a mile of me, down by the river, up on Broadway, up on Central, over here, over there. I don't get it. Two city lots, two duplexes, whatever. Please, please honor the commitment I've made as a community member to this city. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any other speakers to this item? Go ahead, introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Arlene Zamora. And like Andrew, I've been in the neighborhood I've been in the neighborhood for 30 years. I rented a townhouse across the street from I live, and I literally just moved across the street. I bought the house on Polk Street, and I've been in the neighborhood 30 years, raised two kids, and now I have two grandkids. We all share the four-bedroom house together, and have loved living in the neighborhood and raising our family there. Like Andrew, I'm concerned about the parking. There is no parking on the west side of Tyler Street there. I think that's in front of Andrew's house. It's a very tight street. It it's actually a roundabout, and it's already hard enough for fire trucks and ambulance that get down that street. And with 64 or 34 units times two, I guess 68 people or whatever, or maybe more, you're going to have Amazon trucks, you're going to have FedEx trucks, you're going to have deliveries, you're going to have Uber, you're going to have, and who knows, hours of the night with that many more people in the neighborhood. You're just going to have more traffic, and right now it's really quiet. I what I I actually just recently heard about this, and I've been in the neighborhood for 30 years. And when I heard about this, my actually just took my breath away. I'm 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 really shocked that a 34-unit apartment building would be set right there at that location, because it's, like I said, there's houses there, people there's one apartment building cross-street, but it's only like two stories, I think. And it just doesn't fit in the neighborhood. I drove through my neighborhood, and all the apartment buildings that are in the very few that are in our neighborhood are two or three stories. This is four stories. I just and I know other neighbors have emailed their concerns, too, and I just hope you take all our concerns and enter consideration. And one thing that I think that we were wondering if there was a traffic study done for this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker, if there's one. Go ahead. Can you introduce yourself, and you have two minutes?
Hi, my name's Connor Carroll. I live in Ward Eight in the Kingfield neighborhood, so not close to this neighborhood at all. But I heard about this project and wanted to come speak in favor of it, because I'm a renter myself, and I'm very happy in my neighborhood in Kingfield. And within the past couple of years, there have been a couple big apartment buildings, bigger than this one, that have gone up in the neighborhood. And I think at the time, there were a lot of concerns about parking and congestion as well. But now that they're up, and now people are living in them, it's really has not been a problem in my neighborhood at all. And actually, I like just having more people around, walking their dogs and walking their kids around that live in the neighborhood. So, I think that's the kind of thing that can happen here as well. All the environmental stuff with the building, the the passive house construction, like if folks are unfamiliar with that, I would encourage you to Google, because it's it's really cool, just like how much of the original materials from the house they reuse and how environmentally friendly it is. This is the kind of building I'd want to live in. I spend a lot of time in Northeast myself. I'm happy in Kingfield, but this is a neighborhood I might want to live in someday. And I've looked at apartments in Northeast before and had a hard time finding something that that worked for my lifestyle and my budget. So, I just would urge the the Commission to support this variance. It seems really reasonable to me and kind of a no-brainer. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker, if there's one. All right, not seeing any. Before I close the public hearing, I'm going to ask a question to staff, and if staff don't know, I'll ask the applicant. So, the main item before us is just the the variance for to accommodate Excel. Can you respond to one of the testifier's question about the neighbor's access to Excel? Was that examined at all? Or is anything in this project going to impede their access?
I haven't spoken to Excel about the the neighbor's electrical service, but it's certainly if if the neighbor wants to send me an email or connect with me after the public hearing, I can we can coordinate a conversation with my contact at Excel.
All right, and I see the applicant stood up, so.
So, the I completed two projects in coordination with Excel that require transformer upgrade upgrades on their locations similar to this in Northeast Minneapolis. And the general processes, it's a transition. They they bring in three-phase power lines and upgrade the infrastructure in the area. The transformer takes the place of a pole-based transformer in the immediate vicinity, and then the the infrastructure is upgraded, basically. And so, there would probably be a several-hour period where Excel is going to be transitioning the the neighbor's power from the pole-mounted transformer to a ground transformer. That's the likely scenario and how these things typically change over as they upgrade the infrastructure. But those plans get sorted out when we're actually kind of through the permitting process, and and that's kind of on Excel's timeline and in their agenda. We're subject to their agenda, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions before I close the public hearing? All right, public hearing is closed. Commissioners, comments or motions? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Can I still ask staff?
You can ask staff, yes.
Yes, I would like to ask what some of the speakers asked about the traffic study, potentially, did we connect with like the fire department? And maybe I missed it. I apologize. I was going through the materials. But what about the back end with the tracks, like the just the safety, because there's not really an alley, right? I didn't I get yeah. Does my questions make sense?
Sure. Well, I can speak to just in general, the project is subject to preliminary development review. So, that's a comprehensive process where a variety of different departments at the city are looking at the project, including the fire department, ensuring that the the project is going to be accessible to emergency vehicles, Public Works, all sorts of divisions in Public Works looking at. I know there were some comments in the emails that you would have received about surface water drainage. So, Public Works looks at the plans with an eye to surface water, sewers, utility connections, traffic. All of that kind of comes through the PDR process. And so, this project has submitted for preliminary PDR and then has received comments, and and will revise their plans to upload, and will need approval by all of those departments in order to proceed to the building permit stage. This project did not require a travel demand management plan. The threshold for residential projects is, I think, 250 dwelling units, and this one only has 34 dwelling units. And and one of the ways you can get points in a travel demand management plan is by providing very limited or no vehicular parking. So, this project is already providing, you know, some of the some of the amenities that we would want to see through that process.
Okay.
I think you had another piece of your question. Let me know if I answered everything.
It was just the safety with the with the thank you for that, by the way. I apologize. The safety with the I'm staring at the picture right now, if you're wondering, the railroad tracks behind it. Is there any I I don't know, but is there any sort of special accommodation that we're supposed to fulfill for neighbors because of that backlog of just space if there were an emergency, just?
Not that I'm aware of. I you know, it is standard in Minneapolis for properties to have rear alley access, but there are a lot of properties that don't have alley access for reason one reason or another. I think primarily, fire inspection is looking at street access to properties via the public streets, and emergency vehicles tend not to use alleys just due to their limited width, anyway.
Yeah, that I that I knew. I did have one more quick question while I was thinking about it. Sorry, I wasn't trying to thank you for that. How sorry, that's one of the variances, the transformer, like the the variance of the front yard space, does that affect stormwater too much? That's for the electric transformer. I know this is probably in the thing in the presentation, and I apologize if I was deep diving into something I didn't need to do. Is that a problem to is it challenging that we would even need to do that, or is it is it germane to the entire project?
For for stormwater?
To have to have this variance, is it possible to to build what we need to build without the variance for the electric transformer? Sorry, to be able sorry, sorry, the variance is the minimum front yard setback. I apologize, I'm reading the wrong part.
Yes, so the variance is to reduce the minimum front yard setback for the electrical transformer. So, the required front yard setback is 15 feet, and the proposed electrical transformer is within or it's at one foot from the property line. I my understanding is there shouldn't be an impact on any sort of surface water drainage due to the transformer. There is a small concrete pad for the transformer to sit on, but the project is still well below its maximums for impervious surface area for the overall site. So, and you know, the project has been informed by Excel that they require a transformer. So, whether the elect the transformer with the concrete pad is located in the front yard or some other location on the site, it's going to, you know, impact the amount of impervious surface the same way.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Other Commissioners?
One quick clarification, please, Lindsay. Your your the application notes that you would require a different type of screening, because the current screening proposed does not comply. Did I miss what that might be?
Oh, that's right. So, I the condition for that for the variance is that the applicant comply with our screening standards, which is that the screen the transformer be for mechanical screening. So, the the mechanical equipment needs to be screened on all four sides by with a certain opacity. And the proposal, I think you can see here, it was really only shown screening on two sides, and some of the screening was grasses, so it wouldn't provide year-round screening. So, that condition is just in place, so that when the applicant comes in with their final plans, they're showing screening on all four sides to comply with those standards in the zoning code.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments or motions from Commissioners? All right, I'll give mine. First, I want to thank the people who came to testify. You know, I sympathize with the nuisances that are associated with new construction, with new noise and temporary loss of of facilities and things like that. But, you know, in in our 2040 plan, we really tried to advance our climate goals, and this project clearly fits that, you know, adding more infill density, and in a way that is conducive to public transit and reducing VMT. And this project is going above and beyond that with passive house standards and solar panels and things like that. So, I'm pretty excited about this project. The only things that that are really in our domain today are the variance and the site plan review. So, the the concerns that were were brought up about other things aren't anything that the planning commission can take on. For the transformer, the explanation and the variance seem very reasonable. Excel needs to have access to that. And the threshold for denying it would be pretty high. So, so I will support that variance along with the site plan review. Any other Commissioners? Would anyone like to make a motion? All right, I will make a motion if no one else will. I will move to adopt staff findings.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley? Commissioner Baxley?
Aye.
Thank you. Chowdhury?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
We have eight ayes and zero nays.
That is adopted. Good luck with your project. Yes?
I have a question, as you can't see. Are you aware that your audio or visual are totally out of sync?
No. The testifier is saying that our visual visual and audio are out of sync.
Folks, I'll have to check with the AV team in the back about that, if you'll bear with me. Thank you.
I know from experience from watching council meetings that there's a little bit of a delay often time. that there's a little bit of a delay oftentimes. Okay. We'll work on that. Thank you for that. So our next item is item number seven, the Edmund Lena Smith Street renaming. And staff is Andrew Friends.
Before you today is a petition to rename Edmund Boulevard to Lena Smith Boulevard. This petition was submitted by Ward 12 Councilmember Chowdhury. Street renamings are somewhat unique from most of the applications that come before the planning commission in that they are reviewed jointly by CPED and Public Works staff. And so the recommendation to the planning commission today is a joint recommendation from both departments. In addition to myself, Jeff Handeland and Bev Warmka are also here from Public Works to address any questions that come up. Edmund Boulevard, oh, did I not full screen this? Edmund Boulevard runs roughly parallel to West River Parkway between 32nd Street and 46th Street with an interruption between 42nd and 44th. The street is curved, generally paralleling West River Parkway as both the Parkway and Edmund follow the bluff line of the Mississippi River Gorge rather than the primary street grid. Along its length, the street is bordered by parkland owned and operated by NPRB to its east along the entire length and to its west primarily by residential properties. There are 110 parcels that have frontage on Edmund, not including Parkland. 107 of those utilize Edmund Boulevard addresses. Of those 107 properties, there are 103 single-family homes and three duplexes. While there are some small businesses operating as home occupations at some of these properties, there are no principal non-residential uses that currently use an Edmund Boulevard address. Edmund Boulevard is currently named for Edmund Walton, who was a prominent real estate developer in the city around the turn of the 20th century. In 1910, Walton introduced the first racially restrictive real estate covenants in the state of Minnesota. Over the past several years, the current street name and concern that honoring Walton with a street name is inappropriate has been a topic of significant public conversation. The Ward 12 office has worked with community members to discuss this issue and to come up with a route forward leading to the submission of this renaming petition. The proposed street name is intended to honor Lena Olive Smith. Lena Smith was the first black woman licensed as an attorney in the state of Minnesota and was a local civil rights leader with a long career focused primarily around fighting racial discrimination in housing and employment. Since sending out notices for this application, we have received 38 separate sets of public comments. Six of those comments were included in your packets with the agenda. The rest of those you've received at the start of the meeting tonight. Staff's review of this petition is limited to the specific standards that are listed in the staff report, which generally focus on ensuring that the new street name meets all of the city's standard criteria for street names and identifying that there are not significant issues or public costs associated with implementing the renaming. Staff has found that the proposed renaming meets these standards and recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the petition to the city council. Jeff, Bev and I are all available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Are there questions for Andrew before we proceed to the public hearing? Commissioner Shepard?
I just have one question, Andrew. What does the time period of which this name change would roll out?
Chair Meyer, Commissioner Shepard, that's a great question. So after, so the planning commission takes action tonight on making a recommendation to the city council. That, the item then advances to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee of the city council. From there, their action would go to the full city council and then on to the mayor and then to publication. So if, if everything advances without any continuances or anything like that, the, the street renaming would be effective at its publication, which would be September 22nd. The, the process of having actually all of those changes occur through readdressing and through street signs and that sort of thing would take some time. There would be a, you know, there's a period in between. For example, with, with the US Postal Service, you know, they would, the addresses are linked and the, up to 18 months where mail addressed to either address is still delivered, that sort of thing. But the, the official effective date would be September 22nd, assuming there are not delays in the legislative process.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. In the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances, it talks about that two-thirds of, of the people who own property abutted need to be signed for the application. And I requested this application 10 days ago and didn't receive it. Is, is that, are the two-thirds of the signed property owners in the petition?
Chair Meyer and Commissioner Thompson, I believe that petition is for, or I'm sorry, that, that standard is for a petition initiated by the public. I believe that there, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I believe that elected officials have the ability to submit a petition on their own. And I would, if Kimberly has that language.
Is that the standard?
That's correct. So the two-thirds requirement only applies to petitions for street renamings that are initiated by members of the public. Street renaming can also be initiated by a city council member, and that does not require a two-thirds consent from property owners along the street.
Do, just to, thank you, because this, for clarification, because residents have been asking me to. What is that threshold, or is it just unilateral? What is, and is that, is that publicly known to this, to citizens?
There is no requirement for consent signatures to be sought when a street renaming is brought forward by a city council member.
Perfect.
I, I don't know how public that is.
Thank you. That's my only question. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Andrew. I will now open the public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant, who some of you might recognize.
Just give us one second to set up here.
And before you, sir, I'll just say, so, so far I have 40 people who have signed up. If you aren't one of those 40, if you haven't filled one of these out, please do so in the next few minutes. You can go over to Rachel over on the side here. Because I'm only going to accept people who have signed up. So I'm going to give you like five minutes to add your name if you want to, because we need to be able to wrap up this item so that we can finish on time before we lose our captioners. Thank you.
Great. Hello, everyone. My name's Orine Chowdhury, and I have the honor of serving as a council member for the 12th Ward in the heart of the community where Edmund Boulevard lies. I also want to note, I am a member of the Planning Commission and City Council. However, I will be recusing myself from the vote today as I am the applicant. Today, I do not stand here alone. I stand with my neighbors from Ward 12 and Edmund Boulevard, united in a shared vision for justice and change. I also want to express my deep gratitude to my predecessor, Councilmember Andrew Johnson, whose leadership in renaming Dyte Avenue to Chatham Avenue used the same process and paved the way for us here today. Nearly two years ago, neighbors came to me with a critical concern. Edmund Boulevard's name honors a figure, Edmund Walton, who was a harmful actor in our city's history. A man who actively upheld racial segregation through racial covenants and contributed to generational disenfranchisement and trauma of Black, Brown, Asian, Jewish, Arab and Indigenous communities in Minneapolis. As a woman of color and as someone who has listened closely to the voices of our BIPOC neighbors, I can say this plainly. Honoring someone who has played a systemic role in harming countless BIPOC community members is utterly unacceptable. Honoring someone who fought to keep us, our families, out of our neighborhoodhoods is utterly unacceptable. But here's the good news today. We have an opportunity to make a change. By renaming this street to Lena Smith Boulevard, we not only reject the actions of a painful past, but we uplift the stories that have been erased or dismissed. We take this opportunities to educate ourselves on the harms of the past and how they connect to the disparities of today. We shine a light on the remarkable contributions of Lena Olive Smith, the first African-American attorney in Minnesota whose legacy we will explore in our presentation today. This effort has made, this effort has my full support because quite simply, it's the right thing to do. It reflects the core values and the mission of the city of Minneapolis, to remember our history honestly, to celebrate those who have been overlooked, and to educate ourselves and our community about the roots of racial and economic disparities. This understanding is crucial if we are to dismantle those disparities and build a more equitable future. I am profoundly grateful to every neighbor who has engaged with this process over the years. Your dedication, your voice, your commitment has made this a true community-driven effort. And with that, I'm honored to hand the floor over to some of my fellow neighbors who have worked tirelessly on this cause.
My name is Mark Brant. I live in the Longfellow neighborhood. Edmund Boulevard was, of course, named for Edmund Walton. He was a real estate developer in the early 1900s in Minneapolis, and he was the first to use racial covenants to sell properties. The earliest covenant known appears on the right side of this slide. Basically, they said unless you're white, you are not able to own or rent a property. The map in the middle of the slide is showing covenants that spread through one of Minneapolis's neighborhoods in the early 1900s. That bridge over the Mississippi is at Lake Street. Many neighborhoods in Minneapolis were blanketed with covenants leading to the racial segregation and to the wide racial disparity in homeownership that we still struggle with today. And that's the legacy of Edmund Walton. There's more about him on pages eight and nine of the packet that you receive, and covenants are discussed in pages two through six. About five years ago, a couple of us heard the story of Edmund Walton, and we started to spread the word to our neighbors. Initially slowed by the pandemic, but after that, more neighbors joined the effort, and we began working with the Longfellow Community Council and with Councilmember Orine Chowdhury. We have talked with thousands of people in many different settings. Here we are at an Earth Day River Cleanup and at an Open House at Sunbeam Coffee. A good portion of our outreach was focused on the residents of Edmund Boulevard, especially door-knocking, flyering and communication via direct mail. Here's a door-knocking team on the lower part of the screen after an afternoon session along Edmund Boulevard. And in the upper part, you see a meeting of Edmund residents plus other Ward 12 residents that we held in March. We've gotten press from the publications at Right. Other outreach has included church groups such as the Friendship Fest of the Greater Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. And we've done school visits such as this session at Roosevelt High School that you see in the lower part of the slide. There's more about all of our outreach on pages 13 and 14 of the packet.
I'm Laura Triplet. I live at 3506 Edmund Boulevard. So after all that outreach, earlier this year, Councilmember Chowdhury created a survey to make sure that the name change is something that the community wants and to kind of have some integrity to the results of the survey. We had 599 people respond. Of those who responded, 69% of Edmund residents want a name change. 86% of Ward 12 residents, inclusive of Edmund residents, want a name change. And again, we included the broader community because a lot of people interact with the name and the street signs. It's not just the people who are privileged to live on that street right now. There's delivery drivers, there's postal workers, there's kids from all the different schools in the neighborhood walking down to the river, seeing those signs. So this should be a community decision, and the community wants the name changed. You can view all the data in the packet. And also in the packet, you'll see letters of support from the Minneapolis Realtors Association, the Longfellow Community Council and Minnesota Representative Senator Mira. We've also listened to concerns. Here are four. I wasn't included. Well, we've always been an open grassroots organization. You could join anytime. I only joined like a year and a half ago because I had some opinions about how the process should work. We have email lists, newsletters, websites, social media, mailing, flyering, door-knocking, tabling, a lot of opportunities. Number two, this is a, whoa. Number two, why don't we just rededicate it to a different Edmund? This sounds easy, but it's not the right thing to do, and I'll tell you why. First of all, it would be an invisible change. The public may or may not ever know that this happened. And so it's rooted in convenience, not in justice. Secondly, the specific Edmunds that they are proposing has problems. Edmund Phelps was a park board member in the early part of the 1900s. He already has a park and a fountain named after him. But more importantly, Edmund Phelps, he was on the park board for like 20 years. We all know that parks were not evenly distributed around the city of Minneapolis. White neighborhoods got more parks, better parks, more park resources, as opposed to neighborhoods that were primarily Brown and Black people. And so what's more is real estate values are tied to things like proximity to parks. And so redlining and racial covenants are tied to proximity to parks. And so if we want to clearly repudigate Edmund Walton's, you know, what he did, changing from this Edmund to that Edmund is not clear. In fact, it's quite murky. In quite, in fact, it's quite ambiguous. I would even say it's offensive to make that change. So that's why Edmund isn't a good option. This is a waste of city resources. Actually, most of us are volunteers. It's been very little city resources so far. And the public good and the public sentiment value that we'll get from this change is worth it. Finally, this doesn't matter, and it's purely symbolic. This does matter. Symbols matter. The words we use matter. And all the multitude of conversations we've had over these years and the votes that we got on the survey show that people, a lot of people care. This matters to them. Councilmember?
Thanks. I just wanted to quickly kind of go over the support that's available for residents to smoothly update their addresses following the street renaming. Really appreciate city staff being communicative, just to highlight some of them. The city will manage the entire renaming process, including updating all GIS and internal systems, especially emergency services, fire and police. With Hennepin County, address information is integrated, so that will be updated automatically. Since I sponsored this application, the cost of the street signs will not be assessed to residents, so there will not be an assessed cost. We will also be doing outreach to key partners, proactively contact the utility companies, Excel and CenterPoint, as well as USPS to ensure that they have the updated address information and take something off the plate of residents. The city of Minneapolis will also send a letter to residents that can be used at the Department of Vehicle Services to waive all fees for updating IDs. And then additionally, Longfellow Community Council and Reclaiming Edmund is offering volunteer services for community members to drop in and get assistance with address updates, their mail utilities and anything else, because there are going to be members of Reclaim Edmund who also will have to change their address.
Okay, so over a period of four years, we collected over 60 name suggestions.
I'll ask you to wrap up quickly.
Wrap up quick, okay. Lena Smith Boulevard, one outright. And who is Lena Smith? She's amazing. You have a lot of information in your packet. She was a transformational civic leader. You can see some information here. She was defended a Black family who was trying to live in South Minneapolis and got, had rocks thrown, angry mobs of white people chasing them down the street. She's someone all Minnesotans can be proud of. We can all be proud of her. In conclusion, the, this takes us in the right direction. It would align with the city mission, the 2040 goals, and it's overdue when the community has spoken. So let's do this now. Thank you very much. We're available for questions.
Thank you to the applicants. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant before we proceed with the rest of the hearing? All right.
I actually did have just one point of clarification, Laura, and it has to do with the data you showed showing 79, 31 and 5. And the, that appears to aggregate several different sources. I'm just curious as to whether direct ask and inferred, what is the methodology behind those two?
So there were some individuals who ranked the names that they wanted and made a comment that was like, yes, absolutely, thank you for doing this. But they didn't hit yes or no. And then there were some individuals who said, do not rank, do not rank, do not rank. Please don't do this in the comments, but they did not hit no. There was also a portion of time, a brief period, where there wasn't that survey question, working for people to answer that. And so that's how we did inferred. And we also tried to reach out to respondents who didn't make that clear and tried to update that accordingly.
Excellent. So those are two different distinct populations, sets of data right there.
Yes.
They are truly additive, is what I'm getting at.
Well, they're within. They're additive, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. And then just a reminder. Anyone else? All right. And then just a reminder for everyone, if you haven't signed up, please sign up. I'm only going to call people whose names are on this list. And please be forgiving if I mispronounce your name. But first, we have Steve Brant. Is Steve Brant here? Welcome, Steve. Introduce yourself, and you have two minutes. And on deck will be Lejune Lange.
Good afternoon. My name's Steve Brant. I live at 3916 Pleasant and have for 49 years. Just for those of you who are used to seeing me on your side of the dais, I am not speaking here today as the president of the BET or a member, but rather, these are my personal views. I am speaking as the first reporter to bring the work of Mapping Prejudice and the ugly stain of racism in real estate covenants to public knowledge in 2016 in an article that appeared during the last week of my 40-year career at the Star Tribune. I'm also speaking as somebody who, after retirement, joined the work of Mapping Prejudice and personally scanned more than 9,000 deeds flagged by optical scanners to verify whether they indeed contained racially discriminatory language. Renaming Edmund Boulevard erases the street naming honor accorded to Edmund Walton, who played a leading role in segregating Minneapolis. Listen to one Edmund Boulevard covenant. The said party of the second part hereby agrees that the premises hereby conveyed shall not at any time be conveyed, mortgaged, or leased to any person or persons of Chinese, Japanese, Moorish, Turkish, Negro, Mongolian, or African blood or descent. Believe it or not, there are even uglier covenants than that. That's what Edmund Walton brought to Minneapolis. I'm grateful to Councilmember Choudhury for working to do the right thing and get Minneapolis on the right side of history. Renaming Edmund honors the work of Mapping Prejudice by becoming the first organization to completely map the history of any city's racially restrictive deeds. Renaming Edmund Boulevard also honors the legacy of NAACP leader Lena Olive Smith in fighting discrimination, most notably in the case of Arthur and Edith Lee, which was alluded to earlier. Just as significant for me, it means that my granddaughter will no longer live three doors from a street named after a racist or attend a street that fronts on the same street with the same name. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lejune Lange, who will be followed by Pat Paulson. Welcome. Introduce yourself, and you have two minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm Lejune Lange. I'm a retired judge. Lena Smith has been respected in both the African-American community and the bar for many, many years for her service, for her advocacy, and for her integrity. She comes from a family that has served Minneapolis since the late 1800s. The family is Dr. Brown. And so Dr. Brown was our family physician. He told me Lena Smith was his aunt, and he asked me to give her her propers in history and handed me her diplomas. And I worked with Ann Jurgens, gave her that material, gave the Historical Society information. And we also have not forgotten Ward 12 in terms of service. So we worked through the International Leadership Institute to save Fire Station Number 24, which was about to be demolished and got landmark status for the all-black fire station that was designated by the fire chief in 1907. We also have Greater Friendship Missionary Baptist Church, which is in Ward 12. Over 200 members are actively following these issues and engage with the community. And we also have a charter school called Friendship Academy, which is at 3320 East 41st Street. Friendship Academy was relieved when Dyte Avenue was changed to Cheatham, as were the members of St. James AME Church, which also bordered on Dyte Avenue. So these names and who they represent are known by the community, and it's important that they be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Pat Paulson, who will be followed by Penny Peterson.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Pat Paulson, and I am a past president of the Minneapolis Area Realtors, and I've been selling houses in the community for 40 years. I go back prior to the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which didn't stop discrimination. And in fact, sins of the past have a tendency to bleed into the future, and we can see the huge racial disparity gaps in homeownership to this day. So we do have a lot of work to do. This is one step, one important step. Words matter. Names do matter. But there's a lot of work to do. At any rate, I'm speaking strongly in favor of this. I appreciate Councilmember Choudhury and the entire community for coming together and pushing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Penny Peterson, who will be followed by Kirsten Delagard.
My name is Penny Peterson, and I live in the Marcy Homes neighborhood. I was one of the co-founders of Mapping Prejudice, and I'm their property records specialist. Edmund G. Walton was a developer and was proud of his use of racial covenants. First, a definition of racial covenants. They are legal clauses inserted in deeds that prevent people of color from owning or occupying property. When I began looking at these covenants in Minneapolis, I discovered the first one in 1910 in the Longfellow neighborhood in the Seven Oaks addition. But it wasn't until I went to the Minnesota Historical Society and read Edmund Walton's diaries and letters that I understood that Edmund was the author of these first restrictions. Motivated by profit, Edmund constructed a system of racial discrimination by reserving certain neighborhoods for whites only. These neighborhoods would have all sorts of amenities, such as good schools and parks, while others would not. Now, here, I was going to read the first racial covenant, but Mr. Brant did that, so I'll just pass. Edmund's discriminatory practices were profitable for him and copied by other developers. Soon, much of Minneapolis was subject to racial covenants. By 1919, Edmund was pleased enough with his scheme to publish an advertisement in the Minneapolis Tribune, written and illustrated by himself. He included the explicit racial language of his earlier covenants and added anti-Semitic ones as well. Walton was no longer hiding. He was proudly broadcasting his attention and beliefs. Meanwhile, in 1910, Edmund had named a Boulevard for himself. So I implore you to change the name of the city streets so it no longer, we no longer honor this pernicious practice. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Kirsten Delagard, followed by Ann Dergerson.
Hello. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Kirsten Delagard, and I'm one of the co-founders of Mapping Prejudice, along with Penny Peterson, who is the world-class researcher who documented that the first racial covenant in Minneapolis was put into place by Edmund Walton. Though he died in 1919, the practice he pioneered continued. Scores of real estate developers borrowed his words and inserted these same clauses into property records all over the state of Minnesota. So Mapping Prejudice has worked with many of you. Thank you for, to identify these records. And we have mapped 8,000 racial covenants in Minneapolis alone and more than 34,000 across the state. And of course, as our previous speaker said, the Fair Housing Act made these illegal, but our data illustrates how they continue to shape the city. Covenants were used explicitly to segregate Minneapolis. They made large sections of the city exclusively white, and these patterns of segregation continue today. Covenants legitimated racial terror. They steered investment into white neighborhoods. Neighborhoods that didn't have covenants were redlined, which cut off, depressed property values made those neighborhoods vulnerable to urban renewal, including freeways. So racial covenants matter today because they provided the foundation for a series of discriminatory policies that kept people who were not white from finding stable, affordable housing. They blocked homeownership. And today, the Twin Cities has the largest racial homeownership gap in the country. And our nation, of course, has a 10 to 1 racial wealth gap, and these disparities grow out of the history that has been documented by Mapping Prejudice. So that history is why I'm here tonight. Members of the Planning Commission, I call on you to acknowledge and act on this history. There's a difference between preserving history and honoring people from the past, and the names of our streets and parks do the latter, cultivating our collective memory. They communicate our shared values and our hopes for the future. Edmund Walton will never be my north star for Minneapolis, as he played an outsized role in germinating our contemporary racial disparities. Please strip his name from one of our city's most beautiful streets, and this is a small but important step towards racial justice.
Thank you. Next, we have Ann Dergerson, followed by Rebecca Gillette. Ann Dergerson, yep?
I'm Jurgens. There's no sun on the end. That's fine. It's a comment.
I mean, it says sun on my sign in here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Someone signed for me.
Okay.
I'm here because I want to speak to the, I wrote an article about Lena Smith, following a distinguished professor asking me, J. Clay Smith, who was a professor at Howard University at a national conference, asked me, who's this Lena Smith? Can you get me some information about her? This was in the early 90s. I came home to Minnesota from this conference. I was a professor at William Mitchell Law School, which she had gone to, a predecessor school, and no one had heard of her. And I thought, well, that's odd. The first black woman attorney in Minnesota, no one's heard of her. And so I did, of course, the black community had heard of her and knew of her. I mean, and Judge Lange, I'm so glad to see you here today. But the white community or the rest of the, and the younger community didn't really know about her. So I spent five years researching her. It ended in an article published in 2001, and it was really meant as a springboard, and people have used it in really wonderful ways to explore this history. I will say the Arthur and Edith Lee segregation case is one that got national press at the time in 1931. But the five-year-old little Mary Lee, my research assistant tracked her down, and I went and interviewed her, and she talked about how the neighbors had set, she talked about the trauma of people gathering outside their house every night. They poisoned her dog. The police drove her to the school, to kindergarten every day because they didn't think it was safe for her to walk. They loved the house because it was two bedrooms on the same floor. Meanwhile, the white attorney from the American Legion was counseling the family, just take a vacation and give the white neighbors time to raise money and buy you out. My time is up. What I want to say is, these stories are important to revive and memorialize. Lena Smith was a champion for many people who were treated in shameful ways, and we need to remember her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rebecca Gillette, followed by Michael Corey.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name, is this working? Okay. My name is Rebecca Gillette, and I'm the Community Engagement Lead at Mapping Prejudice. I know that many speakers before me have talked about the history of these two people and the actions that they took in the past, so I don't need to reiterate that. What I want to add is what it took to arrive today. Over the past year, I watched the Longfellow community in this process. They started with community meetings. They invited everyone and anyone into the discussion. Sometimes it was challenging to have conversations when emotions rose. Still, they did the work, did it intentionally, and even when there was feedback later in the process that there were not enough voices, they stopped, did a reset, and opened the process again to be sure that it was inclusive, to make sure that as many community voices were heard. And because of the intentional time that they took, they educated many more people about this history. They opened up more conversations, modeling for future generations how to be critical thinkers, to embrace community dialogue, to witness civic lessons we're demonstrating here today, and when harm was committed to the community, to do the repair work that they're doing today. So to me, it's pretty simple. We have a street named after somebody who embedded racist practices on a structural level that had harmful implications decades and decades, all the way up to today, where we see stark racialized spaces in Minneapolis. Or we can decide to put Lena Smith on the street sign that people have asked for, to honor a woman who all can be proud of. As one of my favorite poets, Sonia Sanchez, wrote in her poem Rebirth, "We can say that we, quote, 'left a trail for others to follow when they returned home, as all must surely do to make past future tense.'" Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Corey, followed by Greg Donofrio.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Corey, and I'm a public historian at the University of Minnesota. And, oh, that was not two minutes. My name is Michael Corey, and I am a public historian at the University of Minnesota, and along with my colleagues, I study the history of racism in the Twin Cities. And people sometimes ask us, why does this history that used to be all but forgotten matter today? Why bother changing a random street name when there are thousands of street names across the city that no one knows the origins of? It matters because the street, as we have heard tonight, was named in Edmund Walton's name for a reason. He was held up as someone to be looked up to, someone who represented something that should be aspired to. And as the historical record shows, and so many people have reiterated this afternoon, Edmund Walton was indeed an innovator, an innovator in northern segregation, who played a leading role in testing the waters to see just how much racism new residents might not just tolerate, but see as an amenity. I grew up in a house that had a racial covenant on it. My parents didn't choose to live there because of that covenant. They didn't know about it until years later, and the people who live on Edmund Boulevard today didn't make their homes there because they knew about this history or wanted to associate themselves with that. But now we know, and we can't unknow that. Now that we know, we are involved, and it's our responsibility to say we acknowledge this history and we want to be part of something different. Fortunately today, as we've heard, we have an opportunity to honor a path-breaking woman, Lena Olive Smith, who is truly worthy of commemoration and emulation. When Lena Olive Smith saw injustice, she didn't find a way to accommodate just to try to get by, as many others suggested at the time. She said, no, we're not going to do things your way just because it's scary or inconvenient to stand up for what's right. Right now, history is under attack, and many of our neighbors are being threatened. What a perfect moment to honor Lena Olive Smith as a role model for us today and the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Greg Donofrio, followed by Robert Baker. Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Greg Donofrio. I'm a professor of Historic Preservation and Public History in the School of Architecture at the University of Minnesota. Now, more than a decade ago, my students and I learned about Lena Olive Smith as a part of a project with community members in South Minneapolis documenting the history of what's now widely known as the Arthur and Edith Lee House. As a result of our work, the Arthur and Edith Lee House is listed in the National Register of Historic Places. It is also a City of Minneapolis landmark. My students and I became in awe of this incredible woman, Lena Olive Smith, that the Lees turned to for help and representation when mobs of thousands, what Minneapolis newspapers referred to as riots, turned out on their front lawn to try to terrorize the Lees out of their house. Lena Smith was a very quote-worthy person, and I want to read you one of those quotes. In 1932, she was quoted in Minneapolis newspaper saying, "Some of those favoring a less confrontational approach to segregation were raised in the South and are used to catering to white men. I am from the West and fearless. I'm used to doing the right thing without regard to myself. Of course, battles leave their scars, but I'm willing to make the sacrifice. I think it's my duty. It's a hard place to be on the firing line, but I'm mighty glad I'm there." A hundred years ago, Lena Olive Smith worked to make Minneapolis a more just and equitable city. In 2025, Minneapolis needs to be reminded of her life, her work, and her fearlessness now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. So Robert Baker passes. Next will be Kristen Eddy, followed by Oriana Gruber. Next will be Kristin Eddy, followed by Orianna Gruber.
Thank you. Sorry, little warning there. My name is Kristin Eddy. I'm a resident of Edmund Boulevard. I am extremely proud to be here today with my reclaiming Edmund partners. I want to tell the story about the timeline of this. This has been a five-year effort. I've been involved for two years. It is time that we make this change. I am fully in favor of this and supportive of this, and I implore you, let's do this now.
Thank you. Orianna Gruber, followed by Morgan Smith.
Hi, everyone. My name is Orianna Gruber. I'm 14 years old, and I live on Edmund Boulevard. I'm here today to speak in favor of changing the name of our street. I may be young, but I understand that the people we choose to honor say a lot about who we are and what we value as a community. Right now, our street is named after Edmund Walton. This is a name from a time when things were very different and does not represent who we are today. We're growing, we're changing, and our street should reflect that. Lena Smith is someone who put in hard work to make our city a welcoming place, and she deserves to be recognized. This is where I live, where I walk home from school, where my neighbors greet each other, and where kids ride their bikes and play basketball. This street is part of my life, and I want to be proud of it, not just for how it looks, but also for what it stands for. Changing the name is not about erasing history, it's about choosing to tell a better story, a story that includes all of us, a name that makes people feel welcome, one that reflects our shared values and future. So I'm asking you, let's pick a name that's forward-looking and inspires the next generation of kids growing up on this street. Lena Smith is that name. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Morgan Smith, followed by Marian Swanson.
Hello, I'm Morgan Smith. I am a resident on Edmund Boulevard. I'm also a parent raising kids on Edmund Boulevard, and I am very, very supportive of a name change. Edmund Walton has caused deep, enduring harm to communities of color, and changing our street name does not cause harm to anyone. Inconvenience to the privileged is not harm, especially when the city is offering extensive support to help us with an address change. Equity takes work. But not changing the name would continue to cause harm to a lot of people. I want my kids to grow up learning about courage and solidarity and collective responsibility. And what better way to teach that lesson to the kids on Edmund Boulevard and in this neighborhood than this renaming process years in the making and the ability to reject our racist history of the past and reflect our evolution as a society? Renaming, rather than rededicating to another white man, is an opportunity to honor those who were historically excluded from public recognition, like Lena Olive Smith. She is a champion for civil rights, was a champion for civil rights way back before it was popular and well before it was safe. She is a role model, and I would be proud to live on a street named after her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Marian Swanson, followed by Ellen Luppke. Do we have Marian here?
Hello. My name is Marian Swanson. I'm a retired attorney. I am a volunteer with Just Deeds, helping people discharge racial covenants, and I'm a member of the group seeking to rename Edmund Boulevard. The main focus I want to speak to is a recent unsigned letter that you all received from a group that seeks to rededicate this street to Edmund Phelps. And I agree with the suggestions that have been made recently that the idea that for the convenience of a small group of people, a street that is named after a white supremacist and segregationist should be changed to be named after another wealthy white businessman makes no sense to me. And this would be in lieu of naming the street after a champion of civil rights, who we are just starting to learn about. She became a lawyer one year after women got the right to vote in this country. Isn't that stunning? And her accomplishments in this city were massive. I wonder if any white man fully understands what it takes to be among a small group of people, or a group of people, that is the first to achieve this status and to accomplish these things that she did. Naming the street for her will provide a clear public benefit. It will be an occasion for education and repair and celebration. The cost will be nominal, the inconvenience will be minimal, renaming Edmund Boulevard after Lena Smith will clearly repudiate part of our racist history. Rededicating Edmund Boulevard to Edmund Phelps will surely not.
Thank you. Next, we have Ellen Luppke, followed by Fred Dubose. Do we have Ellen?
Well, yes, my name is Ellen Luppke. I am an assistant, affiliated assistant professor in -- at the Medical School of the University of Minnesota, Department of Psychiatry, but I'm not here representing any organization, just myself. My husband and I and our family have lived on Edmund Boulevard for 49 years. I came here to say that I felt that the -- that the planning did not meet Minneapolis's criteria for street renaming. A street should be named only if there will be public benefit that clearly outweighs the public confusion and costs that would be created by the name change. I feel today that the cost has been minimized. Representative Choudhury says that residents won't be held responsible for paying for street signs, but all taxpayers will. And certainly, there is cost that really needs to be acknowledged for especially long-term residents like ourselves, who must take a lot of time and effort to notify people about change. Also, the analysis reports that there was the Ward 12 Office partnered with community members, and there's been a lot of talk today about how that happened. We personally did not feel partnered with, we felt that our ideas were not included. It was as though there was an agenda. And my husband, who teaches survey methods, actually pointed out how the actual survey of opinions were written in such a way to get a foregone conclusion. I have questioned what the purpose is for renaming the street. I no longer feel confused after hearing such eloquent comments, especially from the 14-year-old who talked about the not erasing history, that was my concern. How do we erase history with a name change? But certainly, we do have a future to inspire younger generations to emulate the kind of example that Lena Smith has lived for all of us. I have wondered about why we can't just keep Edmund and name it after another Edmund who has been recognized for his work with the Minneapolis Park Board.
Ellen, we do have to move on to the next speaker.
Pardon?
Your time has elapsed. Can you please drop off?
So I would like to see you consider that option.
Thank you. Next, we have Fred Dubose, followed by Stephen Kane.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Frederick Dubose. I am the owner of Sunbeam Coffee Shop. I was also a member on the Reclaiming Edmund Committee, and I think everyone did a really good job of explaining how bad Edmund was and how great the alternative name is. But I would like to -- what I'm seeing here is there's a theme of convenience, and I just want to address that really quick. And I'd like for everybody to understand that there -- although I do understand that a name change could be inconvenient, there is nothing more inconvenient than being denied the opportunity to purchase a home for your family because of the color of your skin.
Thank you. So next, we have Stephen Kane, followed by Ben Howery.
Hey, my name's Stephen Kane. I live in the 4,500 block of Edmund Boulevard with my wife and daughter. I just wanted to make a couple of comments in response to the, what I would consider a milquetoast response of keeping the name Edmund but rededicating it. If I gave you a nice, tall, cold glass of milk, and you drank it and then retched because it was spoiled, and then I said, "Oh, you know, yogurt's kind of like spoiled milk, right?" It wouldn't be a great response to you. And the same way, when I think of Edmund, in the context of naming the street, respect any Edmonds in the room, Edmund as a name is a spoiled milk. Now, it's time to move on to something else. And my second point, and I'll leave you, is about the inconvenience, the inconvenience of changing the name and address. Lay it on me, give me as much inconvenience as you got. I cannot wait to delete Walton as an address when I sign up for certain things. I cannot wait to type the name Lena Smith, because at a time when it feels helpless, I will have done the small thing I can do to move things forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ben Howery, followed by Lisa Schaefer.
All right. Hello, my name is Ben Howery. I'm the former community organizer for the Longfellow Community Council. I'm here today in support of renaming Edmund Boulevard to Lena Smith Boulevard. Over the past five years, neighbors have worked tirelessly to raise awareness of Edmund Walton's legacy. He was the first real estate developer in Minnesota to use racially restrictive covenants, a tool that banned non-white, non-Christian people from owning homes in his developments. These covenants spread across the city, and it's an impact that we still see today. Community members have hosted meetings, knocked on doors, handed out flyers, sent mailers. The harm has been made visible, and to keep this name is to knowingly preserve a legacy of exclusion. Renaming this street isn't about erasing history, it's about choosing the history we honor. And Lena Olive Smith represents the kind of history we should uplift. Replacing Walton's name with hers would be a public declaration that we reject exclusion and stand for equity, courage, and community. The concerns that have been raised about the inconvenience of an address change pale in comparison to the generational harm caused by racially restrictive housing policies, policies that started in Minnesota with Edmund Walton. Structural racism hasn't been enforced only through laws, it's been upheld by the inaction of everyday people who have been unaffected or profited from it. People who didn't ask questions, who didn't reflect, and who allowed exclusion to become the norm. Today, we have a clear opportunity to act, to reflect, to acknowledge, and choose a name that represents the values we want this city to embody. A refusal to change this name signifies inaction when clear action can be taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Schaefer, or Schaefer, who will be followed by Joe Larson. Do we have Lisa?
Commissioner Meyer, we do have several people in the overflow room, so it might just take them a minute once they get here after their name is called.
In the meantime, we'll go to Joe Larson, and if Lisa's in the overflow room, maybe we can return to that name. And the one after Joe, if Lisa's not around, would be Jesse McClellan would be next. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Joe Larson. I've been a part of this effort since the beginning, more than five years ago, where along with my neighbor Mark. We started out with a couple of goals. First of all, to confront and replace a street name that represents a documented example of institutional racism in our city. Second, it was not simply the renaming, but rather to engage our neighbors in learning this history and having conversations about the very real impacts of covenants had and how some of us continue to benefit from the covenants that Edmund Walton championed. I've been incredibly honored to hear my neighbor speak today about this issue, and in fact, have taken a number of my speaking points out of here, so I will not spend my time there. What I will -- I would like to point out that Lena Olive Smith fought housing discrimination, defended black homeowners against unjust foreclosures, and confronted the Ku Klux Klan in Minneapolis. She challenged segregation in public accommodations and used the law as a tool for racial justice. I think it is incredibly fitting that we replace a man who sought to exclude with a woman who fought to include. She is exactly the kind of person whose name should be etched into the fabric of our city, not as a token, but as a reflection of the courage, persistence, and justice we all strive for. Symbols matter. Please help us update our city streets to reflect the values our community stands for. Thank you.
I think I'm going to ask people to stop clapping so that we can move quickly, because we have a lot of speakers to get through, and we're going to lose our captioning at 7:30, and we have another major agenda item after this one. So please, let's, you know, don't interrupt so that we can move swiftly. So are you Jesse McClellan?
I am.
Great, you can go next.
Okay. Hello, and thank you to the Planning Commission members, to Councilmember Choudhury, to city staff, and to everyone attending this Democratic hearing. Thank you so much for this powerful testimony. My heart is glad hearing all this. My name is Jesse McClellan. I own a home on 46th Avenue. I was a volunteer at Free the Deeds with Ben at LCC. Covenants are on my city block in Cooper, and a covenant, as Michael said earlier, a covenant was on my childhood home as well, in the city of St. Paul. You'll find covenants in many, many different neighborhoods in Minneapolis. You also find them in Robinsdale, St. Louis Park, Bloomington, Edina, up to Duluth, St. Cloud, Mankato, Rochester. All this started with Edmund G. Walton in South Minneapolis. We know the impacts of his covenants extend much further than a single street that he named after himself without community input. And our democratic process may not have been perfect, but it's a good deal more democratic than what was done behind closed doors in his filing of additions with his name on them. Yes, any change of address process is an inconvenience, so I want to speak to this. We in Reclaiming Edmund Boulevard are ready to volunteer to help our neighbors in that process. But inconvenience is too mild a term to describe the racial disparities in housing faced by hundreds of thousands of Black, Brown, Asian, Indigenous, and Jewish people who were either born into segregated Twin Cities metro area or who moved here since 1910. Local government can and must work through the racist harms of its past inaction. Let's affirm their struggle and their dignity and the possibility of repair by affirming the work of Lena Olive Smith. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have Lisa Schaefer? Okay, I'll come back to that one more time at the end. Next, we have Miles Artis, who will be followed by Robert Britton.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Miles Artis, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs from Minneapolis Area Realtors Association. I'm here today on behalf of MAR to vocalize our support for the Boulevard name change from Edmund to Lena Smith Boulevard. As has already been stated, Walton's actions have harmed our communities and contributed to our racial homeownership gap that we see today. At MAR, we condemn it, and we support the renaming of Edmund Boulevard. Last year, our DEI and Government Affairs Committee wrote a letter of support recognizing and apologizing for the hand our association had in creating one of the most significant racial disparities in housing in the nation, particularly for Black Minnesotans. It has been an honor to work with Councilmember Choudhury and the Longfellow Community Council to see this change. And on a personal note, I am excited to know that Lena Olive Smith, a Black lawyer like myself, will be the name people see when they pass by. Lena Smith's lifelong fight for justice, housing equity, and civil rights are the qualities we must lift up, celebrate, and recognize. So thank you again for having me, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Britton, followed by Harmony Kane. Do we have Robert? Okay, not saying Robert, we'll check again at the end. Harmony Kane? And after Harmony will be Stephen Belton.
Hello. I don't know, am I tall enough for this microphone? Okay. Hi, my name is Harmony Kane, and I live on Edmund Boulevard. Thank you very much. The 45th block of Edmund Boulevard. Members of the Commission, neighbors, thank you so much for this opportunity to comment. I live with my husband and my six-year-old daughter on Edmund Boulevard. A couple of years ago, my constantly curious daughter asked me, "Who is Edmund?" Now, not long ago, before state and local history was always at our fingertips, it was possible or even likely to live on a street for decades without knowing the significance of its name. But today, we know. We know who we honor when we drive down Edmund Boulevard. We know the ideals he held and the practices he championed. We know the kind of neighborhood he envisioned and who was excluded from it. Armed with this knowledge, we face a moral decision. Who will we choose to uplift? Who will we choose to uplift, and what legacy will we choose to carry forward? Some people propose the easy option, quietly rededicating the street to a more palatable Edmund that is a half measure, a blurred compromise that risks being forgotten and leaves the original harm largely intact. Renaming the street for Lena Olive Smith, a Black woman who courageously fought against discrimination, would send a clear, lasting message. We wouldn't just be changing a name, we'd be reshaping how our city remembers its past, affirms equity in the present, and charts a more inclusive future. We would show that we do not celebrate systemic harm, we honor those who fought to end it. Yes, this means we'll need new signs, address updates, some cost and inconvenience, but these are investments in our civic values. And research shows that such changes strengthen community identity, foster social cohesion, and give residents a deeper sense of belonging. Members of the Commission, I urge you to approve the name change to Lena Smith Boulevard. Let our maps reflect our highest values and signal now and for generations to come that we stand on the side of justice, equality, and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Stephen Belton, followed by Cynthia Town.
Stephen Belton should be a no-brainer in 2025 to change the name, whether it's to someone else or just specifically to get rid of the name of Edmund Walton. But sadly, it is not a no-brainer. It should be a time when we make no safe haven for races, not historically and not contemporary races. But sadly, there are arguments that are being presented that you have heard, that you will continue to hear today, and that they really are reflective of the same arguments that were made when, in the fight to stop, the fight to remove Confederate flags, in the fight to remove Confederate statues. We heard the arguments that this is our tradition, we've done it this way for years, that it's a financial burden, and that we didn't have proper notice. Well, you've heard arguments today about why those are specious arguments. I won't repeat them, except for one regarding the lack of notice. I'm absolutely certain that nobody in the Black community received notice in 19 whatever it was when Edmund Walton named that street after himself. And so I will say this to my neighbors. I've lived on Edmund Boulevard, it'll be 30 years now, this month. And to my neighbors, I will say to you, you will be inconvenienced. It will cost you a small sum, your traditions will be upended, and your history rerouted, but I suggest that you consider it a deposit, a small contribution to repair a century of racial injustice. Here's what you have and the difference between these two people. You have one who's Black, one who's white, one female, one male, one working class, one privileged class, one erudite, one ignorant. I know my time is up. One's a civil rights activist, one was a civil impediments activist, one a trailblazer, one a trail blocker. Here's what I would say to you. Lena Smith fought for justice, the other guy fought for profit. There is a poetic justice in renaming this street after Lena Smith. I urge you to do the right thing.
Thank you. Next we'll have Cynthia Town, followed by Lilian Anderson. Do we have Cynthia?
Hello, my name is Cynthia Town, and I'm actually going to cede my time, because everybody has said everything I wanted to say probably better than I could, so thank you. I support the change.
Thank you. Next we have Lilian Anderson, followed by Deb Levitt.
Hello, my name is Lilian Anderson. I support the change, and just listening to everyone speak, I'm very emotional right now. You know, coming from Africa, migrating here, let's just say there's been, call me ignorant, but I found out during George Floyd, that's when I found out what was going on in the neighborhood, which I love, and raised my beautiful kids there. And just imagine, me living in that house, being the first Black person to live in that house, my house, looking at all that and everything that the racial covenant, reading at everything that was going on. I was blown away. I just, you know, I lack words. I just didn't understand what was going on. But thanks to my partner in crime, Cynthia, has really got me, she got me involved with the community and getting to know everything that was going on, and just, you know, reading about the neighborhood. And I really, truly support that that name should be changed, because there's just so much going on. With everything that is going on, and me being from a country where I never knew racial segregation, this was just, I don't, I lack words, but half of them, what they said, it was things that I was going to say, and just thank you guys so much for giving me this opportunity. And that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Deb Levitt, followed by Jackie Gahr.
My name is Deb Levitt, and I've lived in Minneapolis for over 40 years, and I'm a recent resident, to be resident. We bought a house on Edmund Boulevard. We're excited. We also want to express our gratitude to all the people who have done the work to right this injustice. I mean, this is our time to address the historical injustice that we live with every day as we walk, as many of our folks have said here on Edmund Boulevard. So I think this is a time to celebrate, and I think this is a time to really rejoice that we're doing this together. And it's more about, you know, when we know better, we do better. And now, together as a community, we're trying to come together and do better. And I think it's really as simple as that. Sure, there's going to be some people that it's tough, tough to have change, right? It's tough to have change. That's true in our lives. But we have to look at the greater good. And the 14-year-old who spoke today to me really resonated to me. And let's listen to our young people, because they're going to be living on this street well after we're gone. And I really appreciate you all taking the time today to listen to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jackie Gahr, followed by Will Steheely. Steheely?
Hi, I'm Jackie Gahr, and I'm part of the 86% of the Greater Ward 12 that support this change. And I'll cede most of my time as well, it's because everyone's said everything so eloquently. But I would just also like to thank all those who have actually created tremendous value in our community by bringing this forward and taking us through this educational and change process, and I support it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Will Steheely? Great. And then that'll be followed by Kirsten, I can't read. Lishkerfeld?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have to say, today's been a real learning experience. I've heard more and learned more today than, I know you mentioned several years that you've worked on this project. And I think, I think the big thing is that, and I live on Edmund, and I, there were no knocks on my door, calls. There's only been one meeting I went to in December of '24, I believe it was, and that was just by chance I found out about it. So I think that's maybe the frustration, that there just wasn't, it seemed, not for some, that there wasn't much contact and involvement in this whole process. But what I've learned today, I have to say, it makes me wonder why it's taken 59 years to honor this woman since her death. And maybe Edmund Boulevard isn't enough. Maybe there's just another street that, like her home on Fifth Avenue or whatever, maybe that should be, the whole thing should be renamed. But I understand, and I accept the change, and I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next we have Kirsten, I'll just say Kirsten L. Do we have Kirsten? Lish, Lish Sherfield or something like that? Okay, we'll come back to that name. Next we have Carol Becker, who would be followed by Jordan Belton.
My name's Carol Becker. I live at 32148th Avenue South. And, you know, I'm cool with the renaming, but I have to ask, if you wanted to honor somebody, why didn't you honor somebody from the community, from our neighborhood, somebody who's lived on Edmund Boulevard for 30 years, and somebody who was the first African-American mayor, and somebody who was the first female mayor? Because I think she deserves honoring, and she is actually from the neighborhood. And if this is not the right street, then when is the next street that we should be honoring her? Because I know her, and she's amazing, and she was a trailblazer, and every one of the things that you guys said, that you wanted to name this street after, she is, except she lives on the street, and she's lived in the neighborhood. And so I wish that you would think about that when you make this choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jordan Belton, who will be followed by Hazel Hill.
Hello. My name is Jordan Belton. I want to first thank the Reclaiming Committee and Chancellor Chowdhury. Thank you so much. I also want to share that I grew up on Edmund Boulevard, and I live there today. With that said, I recently attended one of the community gatherings on the Edmund Boulevard name change. And while I'm personally in favor of the change, I want to spend just a few moments commenting on one of the arguments against the change. Part of what I felt I heard were concerns about the preservation of history and tradition. To that point, I want to share that I too believe in telling the full story of our history as a community and city. I believe Edmund Walton is an important part of that history. His story should be told. I believe many who want to see the name change would agree with these points. Be that as it may, telling his history by naming a street or continuing to name a street after Edmund Boulevard goes against long-held important traditions behind how and why we name our streets. As a community, we've named them after numbers and demographic places for obvious reasons. We've also named them after people. And when we do this, it's generally been to memorialize, to honor, to celebrate, and to commemorate people with a public legacy that everyone can get behind, at least to some, on some level. Edmund Walton proudly based his public legacy on racial covenants, and as such, he clearly does not fit this standard. The values he fought for are incongruent with mine, my family's, and many of my neighbors, as you've heard. They are incongruent with the very existence of my family as owners of property on our block. They are incongruent with the fact that we live in a community with white Americans, with other, with our white neighbors. Removing his name paves the way to a new future where my family and all people can be represented and respected. Lena Smith is someone who believed in equality between all Americans. Edmund Walton did not.
Thank you. Next we have Hazel Hill, followed by Ed Kohler. Do we have, welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hazel Hill. I'm 14 years old, and I live a few blocks away from Edmund Boulevard. I'm here today to speak in favor of renaming Edmund Boulevard to Lena Smith Boulevard. In 1910, Edmund Walton became the first person in Minnesota to include explicitly racially restrictive covenants in property deeds. I'm going to say that again. He legally banned individuals of African, Asian, and other non-white descendants from owning the homes he sold. Walton helped to create a system where people were separated just because of their race. The home I live in had, once had one of these racist covenants put on it. My family recently amended the deed on our house to remove this language. And even though that was over 100 years ago, the effects are still felt today. That legacy doesn't reflect the values of the neighborhood we live in today. Now, this Boulevard is where children play, my neighbors walk their dogs, and the community comes together. I ride my bike along it almost every other day to visit my best friend. It's a beautiful place, but I believe its name should reflect the people who live here and the values we share. Lena Smith was the first Black woman lawyer in Minnesota. She fought against the same kind of discrimination that Walton helped to spread. Renaming the Boulevard after her would send a message that we are not afraid to face our past, and that we are choosing a future based on equity, courage, and justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Ed Kohler, followed by Sylvie Visangwatang.
Hi, I'm Ed Kohler. Thanks so much for taking time to listen to all of us today. I spent a lot of time just reading every comment I could find online about why people supported this and why they opposed it. And one that stuck out to me was a comment opposing this, and the reason they opposed it was because Lena Smith didn't have strong ties to the neighborhood. Well, the reason Lena Smith didn't have strong ties to the neighborhood, do we need to really get into that? So that was just one little thing I haven't heard said yet today, so take care.
Thank you. Next we have Sylvie Visangwatang, followed by Joshua, and I can't read the last name, but it might be Tais or something like that?
Joshua Tans, he's not here. He left.
Okay.
So, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Sylvie Visangwatans, and I live on Edmund Boulevard with my husband Joshua and our two sons. I'm here in support of changing the name of Edmund Boulevard. As a Black woman raising two biracial boys, I'm all too aware of how often our society sends people of color the message that we don't belong. Sometimes it's subtle. More often now, this message is delivered with a bullhorn from the, from the current president questioning the legitimacy of our first Black president, to the murder of George Floyd just miles away from our home, to the racial covenant attached, once attached to our property, which said my children and I couldn't live in that house. These messages don't just affect adults, they reach our children. When our oldest child was two, we taught him our address as a safety measure. He proudly memorized it. But now, at four, after learning about the legacy of the man our street is named after, he no longer wants to say his address aloud. This resonated with me, and I thought it would be a great move to change the name to somebody he could be proud of. Here we have a chance to send a different message, a message that says you belong, you matter. In a world where so many injustices feel, feel out of control, feel out of our control, this is something we can do, and this is something we must do. Thank you.
Thank you. You said Joshua has left, so next will be Roanne Kramer, followed by Karen Martin.
Hello. I'm a recent transplant from southwest Minneapolis to the lovely Edmund Boulevard. Days before I moved in, one of my neighbors told me about the renaming opportunity that was in front of us, and I was really excited about buying this house until I found out why it was Edmund Boulevard. I no longer wanted to talk about that story. I want to talk about the story of Lena Smith, and I urge you to move this forward and rename the Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Karen Martin, followed by our last sign-up, Adi Salani, and then we'll go to the other three that we missed earlier. So do we have Karen Martin? Okay. Not seeing Karen. Do we have Adi Salani?
Adi.
A.D., oh, Ade?
Chair Meyer, if I may, I believe she's in the overflow room.
Okay. So we can wait for Ade, but while we're doing that, do we have Lisa Schaefer, or Schaefer, or Robert Britton, or Kirsten L? Kirsten L? Are you Ade?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Thanks for waiting.
Sure. Introduce yourself, and you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Adi Salami. I am a Ward 12 resident. I will start by telling you, I might tell you a joke, but I will never tell you a lie, and today I'm not going to do either. Street names are not neutral, they're not permanent either, no matter how many uncomfortable changes people have to live through. This isn't the first street to be renamed, it won't be the last. To the neighbors claiming that this is going to be shoved down their throats or cause them an inconvenience, so are property taxes, and you pay those every year with less complaints. There's a saying that when you know better, you do better. Doing better does in fact take effort. For those resisting this change, that level of effort amounts to a few change of address forms, so take a moment to consider that and reflect on how minor that is, especially when people around the world uproot their entire lives in pursuit of dignity and safety. This isn't about a street sign. It's about other people who start their sentences with "I'm not a racist, but," are ready to sit with the discomfort of realizing that they'd rather protect their own comfort than conform with the systems that created it. And quite frankly, you're not even confronting those systems today. You're actively participating in colonialization, but that's a conversation for another day. Thank you to Councilmember Chowdhury for leading this effort alongside with the neighbors of Reclaim Edmund, and all of the neighbors who've worked to make this possible. Lena Smith Boulevard is a public good, and lastly, lastly, I just wanted to say, I'm the public
Thank you, Ade. That was our last sign-in speaker, so we'll go one more time to the people that we missed. Do we have Lisa Schaefer or Schaefer? Or Robert Britton? Kirsten Leicherfeld? Or Karen Martin? Any of those? And Commissioners, do we have any questions for the testifiers before I close the public hearing? All right, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you to everyone who testified. Commissioners, is there discussion, questions, or any motion? Commissioner Shepherd.
I would motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Commissioner Thompson.
Can I just have one question to the applicants?
We close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I always get confused by that. It's fine.
One quick comment.
Commissioner Shepherd, yes.
I'm your neighbor Isabel, and I believe Isabel was Edmund's wife. So I know you've all done five years of hard work, and I'm not encouraging you to start again with reclaim Isabel, but I just really appreciate all your work, and it's an honor to be your neighbor. Thanks so much for being here.
Commissioner Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly want to thank everyone that showed up to testify. I am very proud to represent you on the county board. A couple of things that stood out to me from the staff report and also kind of what we heard was there, it's very clear to me, there's very clear guidelines on renaming streets, and what CPED, Public Works, and Councilmember Choudry have done is outlined reasons why this meets that criteria. So there is no doubt in my mind that our job as the Planning Commission is to ride with the staff recommendations. What I will add is a couple of just key points, and that's that someone who was born and raised on the south side of Minneapolis, who lives about two blocks from the Arthur and Edith House. It's not lost on me what the city looks like today, what it may have looked like in 1907, and what we have in front of us today, and what our obligation is to our young people and to future young people. I heard words like disruption and burden and inconvenience, and as I think it was the owner of Sunbeam who said, imagine the disruption and inconvenience of trying to buy a home. That's something that my grandmother experienced when she moved into the Bryant neighborhood in the 1950s. I think that this is a sign of many things to come. I was present when we changed the name of Dyte to Cheetah Avenue, area that I also represent. So I am very, very proud of the residents who showed up here today, my neighbors, although I'm on the other side of Hiawatha, to share how, over five years, you all came together in an effort to make this change that is significant. It is not symbolic. To me, the preservation of history is the preservation of the legacy of Lena Olive Smith. And so a few folks have talked about how we choose to remember, and I think that this is a perfect way of doing that, and I am honored to actually be a part of the vote to do that. But I wouldn't be without you all coming to testify today, without your work over the last five years. I hope you continue this work. I've been doing a lot of reading myself about Black history in Minnesota specifically, starting in about 1867. I encourage you to read about Fort Snelling and some other significant areas around St. Anthony, and how that really plays a significant part in our history of our city, and how it aligns with our mission and vision and values as a city. So I'm very glad that the presentation started with that, because that was a great grounding. So thankful that you all came, thankful that this is something that we are also, that our neighbors are also passionate about, that I share that passion with and am connected to. And with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Conley. Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair Meyer. I just, I'll keep it brief, and I think everyone has said things much more eloquently than I'll be able to, but I joined the Planning Commission because of a deep interest in zoning and land use, and unfortunately, like, the history of zoning and land use in our country is littered with examples of these racial covenants, and I think it's important to take steps as a city to address those, and I think that's what we're doing here today. I'll also just add a note that anyone affected by this or in the community who's watching, one book I read about this that was transformative for me was The Color of Law. So I think it's important that we all continue to get educated as a community, and we really think about how these kind of seemingly small changes, like when they accumulate, can like push us forward, so I'll be supporting the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Wagner. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Baxley?
Thank you, Chair. Just general, again, I think street naming is such an interesting and powerful and always sparks debate for our community. It involves some minor practical challenges, updating maps and addresses, but I really believe these actions are important and valuable civic efforts, so I applaud everybody for their time and real commitment and passion. They create a more just and representative public space that reflects our community's evolving values and important history, so thank you for that. I'll be voting to support this as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I also want to thank Councilmember Choudry, the Reclaim Edmund Boulevard Group, the University of Minnesota, and the Mapping Prejudice Group for all the tremendous work that you have done on this. I think it has been extremely valuable for public education and for our body in particular to have a strong understanding of all this history, and especially to Mapping Prejudice, they were involved in the 2040 Plan to help us remedy a lot of this. A point that I just want to add on to all this is that when formal segregation was abolished in the 60s, that didn't put an end to it. It got replaced with class-based segregation through zoning. It wasn't an accident that it was in the 70s, following the 1968 Fair Housing Act, that we began to see much more restrictive zoning across the United States and in Minneapolis. And that is a large part of what shaped the 2040 Plan, trying to remove those exclusionary barriers. So I think this has just really been fantastic to have all of this, to help remind people of that history and to continue making progress to remove those exclusions. With that, if there are no other comments from Commissioners, I'll ask the Clerk to please take the roll.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Thompson.
Yes.
Wagner.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
We have seven ayes.
That is adopted. Congratulations to you all. All right. Next, we have Item 8, the Minimum Height Zoning Code Text Amendment, and Staff is Mayling Smith. If I can ask you all to move conversations outside so that we can proceed with our next agenda item. Thank you.
Please move conversations outside so we can proceed with the agenda. Thank you.
This is review anyway, so. Good evening. My name is Mayling Smith, and I'm CPED staff. I'm on the community planning team, and we're working on a text amendment and also a zoning, I'm sorry, a comprehensive plan amendment. I think I'll just wait a second. They're almost out. Okay. So my name is Mayling Smith. I work for community planning in CPED Planning Division. I'm a principal planner. And we have been exploring over the past several months some comprehensive plan amendments and also zoning code text amendments to address the possibility of allowing additional flexibility in the comp plan and zoning code to allow for shorter building heights in some scenarios. So we've been exploring a few different areas. So a little background, Minneapolis 2040, the Comprehensive Plan, established 14 built-form districts to guide the scale of development for every single parcel of the city, and in 2021, this was codified in the form of built-form overlay districts. So every single parcel in Minneapolis has a built-form overlay district that tells you how short or tall you're allowed to build. And this, there are a handful of districts that actually have a minimum height requirement, and it's at least two stories and up to 10 stories as your minimum height requirement, depending on where you choose to build. And in general, these are areas that are closest to transit, like light rail stations or other really high investment areas and key amenities, and certainly downtown. This is a very zoomed-out map showing the city, and we've seen very many benefits of having minimum and maximum height regulations. For instance, this has successfully discouraged underdevelopment on these key corridors that we've seen, and this is the intended impact. We want to incentivize and be able to work with developers to have a more robust development than might be normally thought of. This is also, you know, speaking in terms of height, building height is a little bit of an easier communication tool compared to using floor area ratio or dwelling acres per, dwelling units per acre, excuse me. So these are just, this is just an easier tool for communicating, not only to developers and architects, but also to the community. Minimum and maximum height regulations have also just increased the predictability of the overall development process, so you've probably experienced that there are fewer conditional use permits coming before the Planning Commission, fewer variances, and this just led to a smoother application process, we found overall. And also, if you wish to increase height on a particular parcel, if you have a development and what you want to do exceeds what was allowed by right, there are ways to increase in most built-form districts, other than the interior districts. You can have, you can apply for a premium by providing amenities. And so this is an administrative way that we can increase height. We don't always have to go through a CUP or a variance now. So far, there have been six approved variances by the Planning Commission. The first three were just rebuilding after the civil unrest in 2020, and then there were three others that were notable. It's the Biochar production facility. This was in Transit 15, where the proposal was for a one-story building, but Transit 15 requires a four-story minimum, and this was a production use, and the Planning Commission did approve this. They also, you also approved a minimum FAR variance. The Indian Health Board is another example. Transit 20 required six stories, and the proposal was for a three-story medical clinic. And then Hennepin Healthcare Purple Ramp Expansion at 600 Park Avenue. This was in a Transit 30 district where the requirement is 10, and the applicant successfully obtained a variance to allow nine stories. And there were two that were denied by the City Planning Commission, first being 2725 University Avenue. This is a very straightforward market rate, mixed-use development, and this was denied. They were proposing a seven-story development, and the requirement was 10. There were no practical difficulties that were evident. And then the Chase Bank Development, this was a six-story requirement, and the proposal was for a one-story bank, and so this was actually withdrawn after Planning Commission. And one thing that we've noted is that a lot of the issues seem to be, or a lot of the tension happens to be in the transit districts. This is kind of where there's a lot of demand for development, but there's a tension between what our zoning code is saying that you have to do and what applicants are trying to do. So seven of the eight variances that we just reviewed were in a transit district. There was one in Corridor 6. And so, yeah, transit districts seem to be causing the most implementation challenges compared to something like Corridor 6, where those are more like kind of the main drag in a neighborhood. You might see a Corridor 6, and then Core 50 is your downtown area. There's a 10-story minimum in Transit 30 and Core 50, and 10 stories is tricky because that requires a more expensive building construction type than the next more intense minimum, which is six stories. So by default, you have to have a much more expensive building type, and this actually makes it impossible for affordable housing projects to even consider building in Transit 30 districts or in Core 50. Production uses tend to be shorter in scale, and as a result, they're having trouble meeting FAR and height requirements. So an example would be like Biochar or other, just like small-scale, like a business owner who's had their property forever and they want to build an addition. Well, they might have a lot of trouble doing that without getting a variance and demonstrating practical difficulties. And then principal uses without a principal structure. These are essentially prohibited if you're in a minimum height area of Corridor 6 or higher, like a public park, or a community garden, or service parking lot, or utility uses. So these are, these are essentially not allowed to move forward. However, the way that it's been applied is essentially correcting for this, and this amendment seeks to address this discrepancy in the zoning code. So this is a map of where the PR2 production and processing district, so that's the, we have two production districts in the zoning code, and this is the most intense one. So this is a map of where production PR2 zoning district exists, but it also has a minimum height requirement. So in many cases, we've tried to match built-form districts to other regulations, including Merka, the Mississippi River critical corridor area. That would be like along the riverfront, so that's like a Corridor 6 area, but then there are other areas that are very close to transit stations, and that's where you're seeing the higher, the more intense transit districts. So these areas have at least two stories or taller. So some of the considerations that we've been thinking of as we've been going through this process is that we want to make it, we want to develop rules that are easy to administer and that don't pick winners and losers. We want to have as few exceptions as possible. We want to have a uniform type of way to administer minimum height. There are always going to be situations we can't think of, so we're not listing out every single use that we think qualifies for an exception, but.
Of course, we'll propose a few.
Minimum floor area ratio is still a metric that exists in many of these districts, so we want to preserve that and not make any changes to that. That's going to ensure that there is a minimum level of development intensity. There are a few exceptions to that, which I will show you. We were thinking, should we just make a minimum height, just to show you the thought process a little bit, we were wondering if maybe this should be a conditional use permit to reduce minimum height, or some other case-by-case review. That just opens up way too much discretion. It's not something that our city attorneys would recommend. So we're, and all of this is to say, we're starting to think about how minimum height and maximum height even are going to be affected by the next comprehensive plan update. So we're proposing these changes for now, and we're going to continue the conversation. So the first recommendation is to lower the minimum heights for both Transit 15 and Transit 20. We would like to reduce Transit 15 from four to three stories, and Transit 20 would be reduced from six to four stories, keeping minimum FAR in place, and then we would not propose any changes to Corridor 6, Transit 10, or to Core 50. And then, we would not propose any changes to Corridor 6, Transit 10, or to Core 50. The second recommendation is to change Transit 30 as it exists today. So, right now, it's just one district. In the comp plan, we would differentiate Transit 30 based on its proximity to the downtown office core. And then, in the zoning code, we would, we would change, we would strike Transit 30 altogether and create two new zoning districts, so Transit 30A and Transit 30B. Transit 30B would be basically identical to Transit 30 as it is today with that 10-story minimum, and that would be in the downtown office core and the closest neighborhoods. Transit 30A would have a minimum height requirement of five stories. And so, this is to ease the burden of that development requirement and to make it possible for buildings to be built without the most expensive construction type. And this map shows you where we propose drawing that distinction. It would include downtown, the North Loop, and the area that is currently Transit 30 across the river in the Central University area of Northeast. Everything outside of that, we would recommend going down to five stories. And recommendation number three is referring to these exceptions that I have talked about. So, we do recommend striking any minimum height or FAR requirements from the following uses, and these would be all related to things that don't generally have a lot of bulk. So, these would be public parks and open spaces, as defined, they have to be owned and operated by the park board. It would also include standalone production uses in the PR2 production and processing district, also principal uses without a principal structure, and basic utilities, which are currently a conditional use permit in every district. And so, here's a summary of the proposed changes that I just went through, and I'm happy to stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Meiling. Any questions before we proceed to the public hearing? Commissioner Shepherd?
Just one. Why five, not six for Transit 38? Just curious.
That's a great question. President Meyer, Commissioner Shepherd, we're trying to be more flexible. We would like to see more development happen in these areas, and you could say that five or six or four, they're all kind of arbitrary. So, oftentimes, we see a six-story building anyway, because that's what makes sense for the financials, or a seven-story building for that matter. So, it's not to say we want to see the lowest denominator, but it's just trying to facilitate some development.
Cool. Thank you. And I do have an amendment that would make that exact change, Commissioner Shepherd. Commissioner Conley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. Can you go back to the map that showed where the current Transit 30?
Yes, and actually, I did prepare like more sector maps. Would you like to zoom in on any of those areas?
I would, thank you. I was looking to see if Cedar Riverside was in there, which is...
Yeah.
That looks to be it, yeah.
So, this is not, this is the existing map. So, currently, Cedar Riverside is mostly Transit 30.
And the reason I ask is Cedar Riverside is very, very tall and very dense already. And so, it sounds like the exemption is for spaces owned by NPRB, which is just one park in the area that I'm thinking of, which is right off the highway. Part of me worries, as you're thinking about the new, you know, discussions that are happening with the new 2050 plan, is that that is a community that not only is very dense, but also very polluted, because it's surrounded by freeways. But if we keep building up, that meets density, but it also limits the amount of additional green space that can be added. So, I've just heard from residents of the area, they like more park space. They just have one, and that's right across from, that's connected to NPRB, the building, the Branquill Center. But so, keeping that requirement, that means that, you know, there's a potential new development that might be coming to the area. That could go up to a minimum of 10, not a maximum.
Correct. And President Meyer, Commissioner Conley, so I am familiar with, I think, the project that you're referring to. And they haven't really been able to move forward because of this minimum, because minimum height has not been addressed. They would like to develop some new park space in that neighborhood, and it's not really feasible for them to own their own parcel and construct a 10-story building as it stands. But this amendment is not just to address that parcel. There are other, there are other developments that are in the works, or other examples that we can point to where there is park board space as part of another development, like usually as part of a larger development. And then, they're like, what do we do with this space? It has to be its own space because it's owned by NPRB. They can't develop 10-story buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner? Commissioner Wagner?
Excuse me. Thank you, Chair Meyer. I had a question, I think I asked this at Committee of the Whole, so I apologize for having a bad memory, but I didn't see it in the minutes. Could you remind me whether you've seen any height variance kind of discussion or projects that have been deterred in the Transit 15 and Transit 20 by the, I believe, respectively, the four and six-story requirements? Or, because I know we have like a Transit 30 minimum height problem. We've seen that through some of the projects you mentioned, but could you speak to the Transit 15 and Transit 20 minimums, and whether you've seen any projects, even in the discussion phase?
President Meyer, Commissioner Wagner, so there are several projects that I think we did discuss at the Committee of the Whole that we don't even, they don't even get going because it's just like a roadblock, and they don't, they don't even progress to the point of having a variance because they don't, they wouldn't meet the criteria that are needed to meet the variance findings. So, it's hard to put an exact number on, you know, this is exactly the district that is causing the most problems, or like these, they're having trouble in these districts. But these, so that's why we're kind of resorting to, here are the variances that you have been evaluating that made it to this point. As you can see, Transit 15 and 20 are among those that have been affected. I guess Transit 20 was where Chase Bank was located. So, I don't have an exact number for you, unfortunately, but I, and maybe Kimberly would have other data to explore.
So, I can speak just anecdotally, because it's hard for us to say, you know, once someone contacts me, I assign a project, and then we don't hear anything to say, well, this project is completely dead, and it's for this exact reason, right? You know, typically, there's a myriad of reasons why a project might not move forward, minimum height being among them. I can say for certain, though, that there are some sites that are on the market right now that I get phone calls about over and over again, and once people hear that there's a six-story minimum, a 10-story minimum for those particular sites, they aren't interested, and those go away. You know, I can say, last week, I had three such conversations. This week, I haven't had any, but it certainly is a frequent point of contention that we're seeing.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Beck, say?
Thank you, Meiling. So, inside the 30B box, which is essentially our downtown, as you described, office core, we, you know, we've been having problems because it is just office. It's not truly a mixed use. So, are we saying that, and you mentioned earlier, it's really hard, which is true, to build worker housing, low-income housing, that's taller, because it's, they just, the numbers don't work? So, by doing this, I'm just curious, the discussions at planning around, are we making that essentially impossible inside this box, to have that happen?
To produce, that's, I would disagree with that, only because it's not just Transit 30 that's within the box. There's also, there are also many other overlay districts. Yeah.
I just want to make sure that's not exclusive, and that we can. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others before we go to the public hearing? All right. Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Suzanne, were you here to speak to this one? Okay. Great.
I'm the only one left. So, hello, my name is Suzanne Murphy, and I'm a Community Relations Manager with Excel Energy, serving City of Minneapolis and Hennepin County. I'm also a proud resident of Ward 12. I'm here to speak in favor of this amendment. We appreciate that the city is prioritizing density in alignment with the comprehensive plan goals, and understanding that, we also appreciate that this amendment differentiates that the built form for, or land use for basic utilities is very different in nature than other types of structures or uses, and it makes sense for these changes to be made to reflect that. In order to maintain the grid downtown, we do have a number of substations, and that for practical reasons and energy security purposes, do not make sense to accommodate a 10-story height requirement. For future energy infrastructure, this would continue to be the case. A tall building would not make sense to have situated within our facilities. So, thank you for having an eye to this issue and bringing this amendment forward to accommodate this type of basic utility use for future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Not seeing anyone. Would anyone like to ask any question of our testifier before we close the hearing? All right. Public hearing is closed. So, yeah, I requested to discuss this item because I have an amendment to propose to it, and the numbers that I have are in your email inboxes sent just before the meeting started. Meiling, can you go to the table that shows the proposals that you have? It's Table 2 on the...
Oh, is this one okay? Or do you want to go this one?
It's close enough. I mean, it's not quite the one I'm looking at, but...
Did you want, this one has 15, 20, and 30?
Yeah, okay. So, that gets to the, so my proposed amendment would be to leave Transit 15 at four, to leave Transit 20 at six, and to bring Transit 30A to six. So, the reasoning behind that, you know, I feel that there's something special to six stories. I don't feel that it's arbitrary to have it there for both Transit 30A and Transit 20, because the type of construction that we're seeing the most of, the five-over-ones, and there's an interesting story behind five-over-ones that I can email out everyone later, but basically, when California legalized certain fire retardants, that allowed new cheaper materials to be used for the last couple decades, and that's why we see this predominant form. So, I think that there's a very strong case for moving from 10 to six, because we have seen a lot of, you know, substantial evidence, you know, people who have gone through the effort of making entire proposals and requesting variances, where it got a lot more expensive for the additional floors after the sixth one. So, there's the expense aspect to it. There's also a livability and connection to the street aspect to it, like six stories is the approximate level where you can still have eye contact with someone on the sidewalk. There's that connectivity to the street, and six stories is the pretty common form that you see in a lot of European cities. So, I think there's something special to the six-story requirement. So, I'm completely on board with the distinction that we're making between 30A and 30B and the different uses that staff has proposed to carve out. But as Commissioner Wagner was alluded to, like, when we were talking in Committee of the Whole, like, the applications that actually got substantiated enough to come before us, like, it was clear that we have a Transit 30 problem. It is not clear that we have a Transit 15 or Transit 20 problem. So, I guess procedurally, we should move the item overall, and then I can propose my amendment. But I'll move to discussion. Did one of you want to speak?
I do.
Okay.
I just want to say, I was at the Committee of the Whole. I really appreciated the information. I've been one who's concerned about the impact on development of some of our minimum height requirements. I really appreciate all the staff work that's gone into this, and I'm comfortable with what the staff has proposed, so I just wanted to say that.
Would you like to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I can move the staff report.
Okay.
Or recommendation.
All right. And is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. And then, I'm going to move my amendment to modify Transit 15 to four stories, Transit 20 to six stories, and Transit 30A to six stories. Is there a second to the amendment?
Yes, I'm just checking in with the clerk. So, we have a motion and a second to adopt staff recommendation. So, I believe we would vote on that, but I'm...
Let me check. I think an amendment is in order, but let me double-check my...
Right, but it needs to be accepted by the person making the motion.
I think normal procedure...
Rachel Volcker.
That'd be a fair friendly one, but we can have, usually, we bring the motion forward, and then each amendment would get voted on. That's how I've always been used to it. While they're looking that up, we can have discussion of either the amendment or the underlying motion. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, Chair Meyer. This one is difficult for me, I think, and when I say difficult, I'm fully supportive of addressing this issue, but specifically your amendment. I've thought a lot about it this afternoon, and thought about our city and the development environment we're in, and I think that there's like a massive lack of development activity in our city, and I think that we're doing the right thing to make moves to hopefully bring some of that development back. Would we all love to see more housing in Transit 15 and Transit 20? Like, I think, yes, we need more density, we need more housing, but these are minimums, these are not maximums. I looked at the map, and I think this would materialize as a lot of, potentially, some townhomes in some of these locations, and townhomes can be built very densely. So, while I'd prefer to see larger buildings, I think a new building of any kind is often better than nothing, an empty parking lot, or whatever it may be. So, with that said, I'll be supportive of staff's recommendations as stated.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Chair Meyer. I would echo what Commissioner Wagner said and what Commissioner Jones said earlier. I, too, these are just, they're minimums. It doesn't mean that people can't build larger, but I think it's more inclusive of different builders, too. Maybe people who want to get into the market, they have a smaller company, they can't afford the bigger built forms. So, I support staff recommendation as well.
All right. So, I don't think I saw any seconds, so I'm going to, oh, go ahead. Did you have, Commissioner Chowdhury?
I was just going to make a point of order around our process to amend, but if you're going to take back the amendment, that might not be...
Can you do that for our education?
Yeah. So, according to Roberts Rules of Order made simple, once a main motion is made, it's the property of the body to amend. So, you can't make an amendment until there is a motion before you, and then it is in order for a member of the body to make a motion to amend. So, without the main motion, we couldn't even amend.
Right. We're just, there's a chart here about what's a debatable and undebatable amendment, and how that impacts the way the motion flows through the process, and it's difficult to read, so...
Well, I have to assume a substantive policy amendment could be debatable.
Yeah, it's a standard amendment.
I believe this would be debatable.
Okay.
Yes.
But I haven't heard any second on it, so I'm, we're back to the underlying debate on it.
Can I add one other comment, Chair Meyer? I would say, I do think there's a difference between five and six. Commissioner Shepherd alluded to this as well. I would be supportive of an adjustment from five to six in Transit 30A.
Would you like to make a motion to that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to make that motion to adopt staff findings, with an exception for Transit 30A, with the minimum stories now set at six instead of five.
I will second that motion.
But to clarify, you're leaving, you're leaving the, you're leaving 15 and 20 as staff recommend?
Correct. I'm leaving the three, the three stories minimum in Transit 15, the four stories minimum.
Thompson seconded your motion. The main motion on the floor is staff recommendation, which was made by Jones and seconded by Thompson. So, we have a new motion from Commissioner Wagner, unless you want to make it an amendment to the existing motion.
Which would you prefer I do?
As an amendment?
Amen.
I'm still learning this stuff. I will amend the previous motion by, was it Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
And I will motion to change 30A minimum from five stories to six stories.
Okay. So, Commissioner Wagner's amendment to Commissioner Jones' underlying motion is what's on the table now. I think that that completely makes sense. I mean, there are so few Transit 30 areas, like, I think requiring six stories in them is a very modest requirement. Commissioner Chowdhury?
Yeah, I would offer my support for this as well. I think, I wasn't able to support the previous amendment that was on the floor, because there wasn't going to be a difference between Transit 20 and Transit 30A at that point, but I found Chair... and Transit 30A at that point, but I found Chair Meyer's argument about a requirement of six stories very compelling. So I'm happy to support this amendment.
All right. Further discussion to the amendment?
Chair Meyer, I realize many people have spoken in favor of this, but no one has actually officially seconded it. Would someone, oh, you did, okay, I didn't catch that. Thank you so much.
Yes, sorry. All right. If there's no one else, we will vote to the amendment, which is to change the staff recommendation. So Transit 30A would have a six-story requirement instead of five. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley?
Aye.
Chowdhury?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Jones? Shepard?
Aye.
Thompson?
No.
Wagner?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
So there are six ayes and two nays.
All right, and now we're back to the underlying motion. Is there any further discussion? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on that.
Commissioner Baxley? On the main, on the amended main motion?
Aye.
Chowdhury?
Aye.
Conley? Sorry, my lines are too small. Jones?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
We have eight ayes and zero nays.
All right, that is adopted, and concludes our business for the day. Our next regular meeting is August 18th, and we have no Committee of the Whole this Thursday. Are there updates from staff?
Just one brief update. So we did receive an appeal of the decision of the Planning Commission to approve the Seven Points Project that was before you on the last cycle. That will be going to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee of the City Council on August 12th.
And we also had the Upper Harbor Terminal appeal, right? Can you update everyone on that?
Yes, so the Upper Harbor Terminal appeal went to the Biz Committee last week, and the appeal was granted, so essentially adopting the staff recommendation on that, and that goes to City Council this Friday.
Any updates from Commissioners? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.